Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out this evening to the May 9, 2019 School District of Haverford Township Board Conference and Business Meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I do call a roll, please.
Okay. Dr. Allen Stuck.
President.
Dr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Fleischer.
He is here, but he's not sitting here.
Here somewhere.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Yeah.
Ms. Minji.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here.
Mr. Feinberg.
Here. Thank you very much. We have two people that have signed up in advance to speak in public session. When I call your name, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address, you'll have three minutes. And if you run over, we'll ask you to finish it up, okay? The first person is Melissa Romano.
Hi. My name's Melissa Romano. I live at 1700 Robinson Avenue, Haverford Town. And this is my daughter, Ava Belle. She's currently a kindergartner at Linwood Elementary. And I also have a three-year-old at home who will be one of the first classes in the new building in 2021. First, I want to thank everyone for not only the incredible education Haverford Schools offer, but also the great mental and emotional health, physical and emotional safety, and inclusivity provided for all the children. We are all very excited for the brand-new, state-of-the-art Linwood School Building. And even better, we understand the estimates were under budget, leaving some room for additional features. We would like to ask the school board, again, to prioritize solar panels to generate clean, renewable electricity for the school. And also, maybe the first time you're hearing this, as well as electric car chargers, to encourage teachers to get electric cars. Climate change is a big threat to my children's generation. We are already seeing examples of climate change currently today. Temperatures are rising, causing ice and glaciers to melt, which in turn cause oceans to rise. Flooding is a big concern, not only for islands and coastlines, but right here in Pennsylvania, as we are seeing increased rainfall leading to more flooding, which also attracts more insects like ticks carrying Lyme disease and mosquitoes carrying the Zika virus. Climate change is mainly caused by humans burning fossil fuels, and we have been for several decades. And now we have just one last decade to stop using them to prevent catastrophic damage, according to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. The Paris Accord anticipated staying under a 2 degrees rise in temperatures and updated to a 1.5 degree to avoid the most dire effects. But we are currently already at 1 degree rise and estimated to reach temperatures of 4.5 degrees Celsius by the end of 2100. Haverford Town Commissioners passed a resolution back in October to transition the entire community to 100% renewable energy by 2030. The township buildings are only a small piece of the community where the schools and residents use the most. I believe adding sustainable technology like solar panels and electric car chargers to stop using electricity generated by coal gas and oil is much more important than terrazzo or quartz flooring. My children care very deeply about the earth. They may not understand the full concept of climate change yet, but they know it's best for keeping our earth healthy. They know that mommy's electric car is better because it doesn't use gas, and that plastic straws are bad for the animals in the earth. Flowers are food for bees and butterflies, and we pick up trash along the neighborhood as we walk around. And they love to help me feed our food scraps to worms making compost. These kids may be small, but they have bigger hearts and more compassion for the earth than most adults I know. As a thank you from my children, we would like to present each one of you with a stainless steel straw so that you may avoid plastic straws yourself. And we just hope that you would prioritize solar panels and electric car chargers for the new Linwood School Building, and continue to think about sustainable technology in the future and every day. And to help make this choice easier, I have a handout to how to obtain a grant for $10,000 through the State Department of Environmental Protections for each car charger station. Thank you.
All right. You gonna help me?
No.
Are you gonna help?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 I would like to mention that, you know, there's been considerable interest both on
the board and in the public about energy efficiency and renewable. And there's a couple of things in the works. One, we've asked our building rep and architects to bring some information to us, probably in a June meeting, of some options. I know the solar panels sound great, but when, you know, at least on a preliminary basis, without significant tax incentive-type programs that are maybe available to private citizens, we haven't been able to come up with anything that looks, at this point, like a feasible way for us to economically do solar panels. The doors open there, and we'll see. We've also talked a little bit about, you know, the educational value, so it may not just be a monetary decision, but we'll certainly look into it. One other thing that I can say, it's great that the township is going to be 100% renewable by when? What year?
2030.
The district plans to be 100% renewable by 2019, so we'll probably hear more about that this evening.
Not yet now.
This year. So. The next person who signed up is Mike Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg, Dr. Ruscie, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Mullin. I am a high school English teacher. I have been at Haverford High for 24 years, since 1995, but all told, 32 altogether. I'm also the president of the Haverford Township Education Association, and we represent the 400-plus education professionals that serve the School District of Haverford Township. So we're the teachers, the counselors, the nurses, the librarians, the psychologists, the home and school visitors, and the therapists. In short, if you need a certificate to do your job here and you're not an administrator, HTA represents you. HTA is affiliated with Pennsylvania State Education Association and the National Education Association. I'm here to say thank you for all of the outpouring of support and appreciation that has been shown to us during Teacher Appreciation Week. We're certainly thankful for that. But we also know that, here, at least at Haverford, that appreciation's not limited to a week. I'm here to say that we know that we get your support every day, not just in grand gestures like the cookies and the pretzels. Thank you, Dr. Ruscie. Or the free burritos or anything like that. And everybody loves a good free burrito. But it's the small things that this community does that gives us the understanding of just the level of support that we get every single day from all aspects of the community, and we're very thankful for that. We have citizens in the township who value public education. We have great families, just adults in the home lovingly monitoring academic progress, you know, making sure, investing in their kids and in their education. That's the appreciation that we get. We have a deliberative and responsible board. We have great administrators. We have fantastic kids. And so that makes us very happy, and we're very appreciative of that. I would like to ask that maybe we can think about changing the name of the week to Educator Appreciation Week. It's not just classroom teachers. It's all the educators, all the people that I listed. But I would also like to include everybody here, the board, you guys are educators, the administrators are educators. Anybody who comes in contact with our students is an educator, the bus drivers, the maintenance staff, the food service people, everybody. So I think we should appreciate all of them, all of them as well. And if you'll just give me one final brief thought, I'd just like to let you know what it is we think we do. And I know you know this, but I'm on TV, so I'll get to let everybody else know. What is it that we do, right? Music appreciation is to think about what music is. So what is teaching? Now, contrary to popular belief, right, and the great world thinks that teaching is taking information and putting it in, but that's not what we do. It's quite the opposite. The very word, education, educare, it comes from Latin. It means to pull out. And that's what we do. We meet our kids, and we give them the opportunity to be better than they are when they walk in. Our idea here is you walk into school one way, you come home at night, and you're different. You're better. Because you're challenged, and maybe even a little bothered or bugged by something that you learned or thought about on that particular day. And finally, and I think this is what really makes educators, educators have an unshakable faith in human nature. We have an optimism. Oops, sorry. We're optimistic. We believe that when we walk into our classrooms, I look at kids, and I know there's a kid who's going to cure cancer. I know that there's going to be a kid who's going to alleviate human suffering. I have a faith in all of them, that that's what they'll be. I know that you know that. I just want everybody there to know that. So on behalf of HTA and all the educators, thank you for your outpouring of support. We deeply appreciate it. It's an awesome responsibility, but we joyfully accept it. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullin. And thanks to all our educators, and our appreciation is 52 weeks a year. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak this evening? Moving on to our conference agenda, first item, oh, sorry. Next item will be our student reps. Tonight, we have Shelby Huffnell from the high school, and I understand this is going to be your last meeting, making a presentation at the board, and that somehow you managed to get thank you notes and...
Well, actually, it'll be my last report before I graduate, so I thought it'd be best to thank you before, or before I'm not an enrolled student in the school district.
We certainly thank you. And we also have Nora Healy and Riley Vedder from the middle school.
All right. Hello, school board, and thank you for having me. On each of your places, I've left you a small token of my gratitude and appreciation. I want you to know I'm truly very grateful for all the experiences and skills I've learned on my position, under my position on this board for two years. And this is my last school board report before I graduate next month. I will be at the meeting in June after graduation, but I thought it would be more appropriate to thank you all for what you have taught me while I'm still an enrolled member of the school district. So without further ado, this month of May is turning out to be one of the busiest all year, as all activities, as well as seniors, come into the homestretch. Only 17 more school days until graduation. So let that sink in. I'm counting all of them. AP testing was held at the high school all this week and will continue into next week. After that, starting on the 22nd, we'll have Keystone Testing at the school for freshman and sophomore classes. Last Friday was Decision Day for the seniors of Haverford, with all students encouraged to wear gear from their college of choice. Seniors were welcome to a complimentary breakfast and the East Commons before school for just one of many senior events to come this month. On the 24th, there'll be a senior picnic and field day hosted by Student Senate and senior class officers. This fun day will include water slides, good barbecue, sports competitions, and much more. On the 29th, senior scholarships will be announced at the Senior Scholarship Night, just in time for senior prom and blast on the 31st. Those were all senior events. They're all coming to a close. This past Friday was the final concert for Triumph Music Honor Society. Our most talented musicians performed one last time to fulfill their yearly requirements, which rewarded their pink graduation cords and certificates. Thank you and congratulations to all that performed. Last Tuesday was the final high school and jazz, or band and jazz concert. Next Monday, May 13th, is the final strings concert for the high school and middle school. And the following Sunday, May 19th, is the final high school choral concert. The final band concert is Wednesday, the 22nd, for small chamber groups by instruments of our topwind ensemble band and orchestra. These arrangements and groups have been practicing around the school for weeks and are proud to perform in their small groups for a more intimate band concert setting. These concerts are your last chance to hear our favorite performers, and we encourage everyone to come support the arts and enjoy. All concerts are free admission. The final strings concert is on May 13th at 7:00. The final choral concert is Sunday, May 19th, at Ardmore Presbyterian Church at 3:00. And the final chambers group concert is May 22nd, starting at 7:00. Please consider that the spring choral concert is also Miss Cor's final performance besides graduation before her retirement, for which we will all miss her dearly. This past Saturday, our library was host to the end-of-the-year AP Art Show exhibition. All our talented AP college-level artists have been working the whole year towards the showcase of their talent and hard work. Students created a booth to display and sell some select pieces if they chose. There was live music from more talented high school artists, good free food, and admission was simply a donation accepted at the door. It was a very enjoyable night, and all students did a lovely job presenting all their talents. This Saturday, May 11th, all Haverford Town Prince and Princesses are called to the high school from 1:00 to 3:00 to eat, dance, and party with all their favorite Disney princesses. The Haverford Drama Club will be hosting this event and hope that all interested are able to attend. The admission is only $5 a child, and will feature such favorites as Moana, Anna and Elsa, Belle, Cinderella, and more. That is all, and as always, thank you for having me, and I always, I'm always happy to report to you the goings-on at my school. Thank you.
So again, thank you for having us. And to start off, we are happy to report that our Bringing Hope Home Olympics fundraiser was incredibly successful this year. We raised $111,994.92 for local families battling cancer in our own community.
A few more, a few more things, concerts are happening over the next few weeks. Haverford High School and the 7th and 8th Grade Orchestra String Concert will be held on May 13th at HHS at 7 o'clock PM. Our 7th and 8th Grade String Chorus Concert will be held on May 21st at HHS at 7 o'clock PM.
We hosted the first annual Delaware County Track and Field Meet on Friday, May 3rd. We had approximately 23 teams and over 500 student athletes who were competing in this event. We also raised over $2,500 for the high school blast.
May is a month to appreciate and recognize the wonderful people in our school. We wanted to thank our teachers on May 7th and our school nurse on May 8th.
Our annual Comic Fest is scheduled for May 18th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We will have at least 20 professional creators attend the event this year. More information can be found on our website. Again, thank you for allowing us to present tonight, and we're always happy to be here.
Thank you all. Thanks very much. I guess we'll have our goodbyes for you at the next meeting.
Yeah.
But thank you very much for all of this.
Oh, I should mention, they're Clan Divas, I think is the name of it. It's just a succulent, so maintenance is very little, which is nice.
We like that.
It's very thoughtful of them. Now onto...
We have to send her a check. Is this what this is all about?
On to our conference agenda. First item, it seems that the Education Foundation just wants to keep giving us checks, so we're happy to make that a regular feature if you would like.
Hi, everyone. I am Jim Blumenstock, board member of the Haverford Township School District Education Foundation, and yes, I'm back again. It truly is an honor to be given the opportunity to recognize these creative and innovative programs that come forward to us by the various schools and their staffs and the administration. So it's a real treat to be up here. I am here tonight with two members of the science community here in Haverford Township School District, Dr. Nesbit and Dr. Tomaszewski. And again, we want to thank you, Larry and Dr. Ruscie, for inviting us to make our presentation tonight. We're here tonight after a very long journey, so this is a very special presentation, especially for myself and Dr. Nesbit. This grant has been in, let's say, evaluation, analysis, evolution for the last five years, just about at this point. But I'll leave the details to these two gentlemen who really know the insides and the details of what they're going to make happen in the next couple of months. But just to give you a bit of history, this is a classic demonstration of collaboration and stamina by the staff at the high school. We started in 2014 discussing implementing an array of solar panels, to tie into the presentation earlier, for educational purposes. And we were all excited to make that happen, but little did we know there was a lot of complicating factors to making that happen. A lot of complex legal issues, bidding issues, infrastructure, plant issues that just we could not make happen. And then the solar industry went through some changes with pricing, and that threw us for a loop. So these gentlemen went back with their peers and dug in and figured out how else could they make something big happen. So that's what we're here for tonight, is to make the presentation, to allow them to move forward with the installation of the high school's Makerspace, and I'll let them explain the details of that.
Jeff.
First, I want to say thank you very much to Mr. Blumenstock also for his passion and endurance throughout this whole process and his patience throughout the process. We are very excited about receiving this grant. As he said, it took us many years, and most of the scientists, science teachers at the high school were part of this process from beginning until now. Really, as we transitioned and talked, went through the science audit and talked about what other possibilities might exist, Dr. Tomaszewski's, what was the IPS crew, is now the Engineering to Learn teachers. And it's, so it's Dr. Tomaszewski, Mr. John Schultz, Mr. James Jeffers, and Mr. Tim Foster, and myself, and we all sort of brainstormed as to how to make the Engineering to Learn class better and constantly growing, and what are we missing at the high school? And really, the idea was Makerspaces have become very popular, and we weren't quite ready to have fully open, accessible Makerspace, but we wanted kids to have maker-like products and be able to experience and use these things in a classroom setting. So we did actually visit Haverford College, where they do have a pretty robust Makerspace, and looked at some of their resources and materials. Initially, we thought that we wanted to just have several 3D printers, because there are 3D printers at the elementary and middle school levels, and we actually did not have them too much at the high school yet. We have one in a technology class. But then through research, we also looked at some other products, and ultimately, we settled upon a MakerBot printer, which is a 3D printer, and also a laser cutter. And I'll let Dr. Tomaszewski talk a little bit about both of those things and how we can use them and all the possibilities with them.
Thanks. So like Dr. Nesbit said, as a result of our curriculum audit, we revamped our 9th-grade curriculum. It is a project-based learning class now. The students do all sorts of different projects. They'll be starting rockets on Monday, actually. We finished up boats and musical instruments this week. So we wanted ways that students could very precisely make pieces for their various projects. And scissors and X-acto knives just weren't cutting it, if you, pardon the pun. So 3D printers were one option. We didn't love the constant waste of plastic and use of plastic with the 3D printers, and thought maybe there was a better solution, with that being one of the components. So the laser cutters can use pretty much anything, particularly cardboard, as its medium. So students can draw something on the cardboard, put it in the laser cutter, it'll scan it, and you can cut then an infinite number of copies of that same thing. You can create things in 3D where you stack them and make them smaller and smaller, or bigger and bigger, and create these three-dimensional shapes using the laser cutters. So the possibilities are endless, and we're recycling then our materials from the poster boards that they do earlier in the project, that they can then put them in the laser cutter and make some fins and nose cones and something else out of them later on. And the exciting part for me personally is I don't know what the students are going to make with these things. I can come up with ideas that I think that would be fun or interesting, but at the end of the day, the kids have the ideas, and they're the creators, and they're the ones putting it to use. So this 9th-grade curriculum is one place that we'll implement them. We have a new class starting next year with microprocessors and Arduinos. Hopefully, we can eventually incorporate it there, and then possibly even some club activities later on in the future.
So just one quick note, the $13,500 that we'll be presenting tonight is again just the beginning. It's a sort of a seed money experiment for these gentlemen and their peers to find out what really will work best over the long term. So there is some other monies to be awarded if things go the way we expect them to go, and they certainly find out, you know, what works best for the school. So with no further ado, Jeff and Jeremy, we want to congratulate you and thank you for your...
And do you want them to come out in front of the podium?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for all your efforts.
Yeah, we'll make that show.
Jim, thank you, and all the members of the Ed Foundation very much. We really appreciate your good work.
Just curious, how'd the run turn out? It looked like a great event, looked like you raised a lot of money, but I was just curious.
Yeah, it was a great day. We had 375 runners, including 75 students from the elementary, student run in the 1-mile race. We don't have the final challenge, but it's hoping we're around 47.
That's great.
Nice. Thank you.
Next item on our conference agenda is Curriculum Audit Updates and Haverford Online. Ms. Saxa, Dr. Nesbit, Ms. Connolly.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Dr. Ruscie, members of the board, members of the administration, and of course, the public. We thank you for your time and attention this evening. We're very excited to share two presentations. One is giving a little bit of an update about the Haverford Online programming that we offer here. It's really a blended model, and Dr. Nesbit will take us through that. And then what will follow is an update to the hard work that our Social Studies Audit Committee has been doing all year long, and we've come to some recommendations, and we have some ideas for what this is going to look like moving forward. So we want to share our process and our recommendations with you as well this evening.
Good evening again. So before I begin the Haverford Online school presentation, I thought I'd tell you two stories about students who are in Haverford Online. These stories have been changed slightly and altered slightly. We did talk to the students, but get their permission that we would share stories, but we didn't want it to be overly identifiable. But these are experiences that are of students who are in the online classes. Student A chose to take online classes because he was having a hard time focusing in a classroom setting and was experiencing anxiety. He tried attending the high school full-time, but the challenges he was facing were beginning to impact his health. Due to a past history of school challenges and the anxiety he was experiencing during his 9th grade year, the student and his mom wanted him to try some...
his ninth grade year, the student and his mom wanted to try something different. Haverford Online School proved to be a good alternative. He started in 10th grade with two classes, and it really helped with his stress and anxiety. In addition, because he wasn't in school as much, he was able to learn at his own pace. He liked the experience, so he decided to continue with online classes in 11th and 12th grade. Working online gave him the space he needed to complete all of his work efficiently. He accessed the Oakmont Support Lounge several times a week to receive his support. He was able to get extra academic support, print materials, and easily send work to his teachers. He also met teachers at the lounge after school to receive specific subject help. He graduated on time and is currently employed in his desired field. He claims that he may not have graduated had Haverford Online not been an option for Student B is a high-achieving student who is actively involved in clubs and sports at the high school level. They have an internship in the community where they work 20 hours a week in a field of interest. They enrolled in Haverford Online to take one class per semester for their 11th and 12th grade year, so they were able to create some flexibility within their schedule, which allows them to continue their internship and after-school involvement while still earning the credits they need to earn acceptance into their desired college. They accessed the Haverford Online Lounge when time in their schedule provided and met with their teacher once a month after school to check in and receive support on their assignments. They graduated successfully and are now attending their desired university. So this year, we have over 58 students enrolled at the present time, and this is just two stories of very different types of students and how this online school has been able to support them as they work towards graduation. So what is Haverford Online? It's a combination of online learning with instructional support by our Haverford teachers. They can work with direct contact, they can work through email, and they can work through telephone. The students who are enrolled in Haverford Online still continue to have all the services of the school, guidance counselors, social workers, case managers, and they can also receive the service of online teacher who supports those students. We have one teacher who is assigned half of the day to work and support all of the students who are in the program. So how do students enroll? Primarily, students enroll through their guidance counselors. It's a discussion with an assistant principal or a guidance counselor, and that generally is the process. Oftentimes, it is students who are transferring here from either a cyber charter school or from a local Catholic school or a local private school, and they may have heard about it and they may call me to start that process. There may be individual meetings, sometimes they'll come in and take a tour of the facility, and then ultimately, they will work with their guidance counselors to figure out what is the entire plan, whether it's all online or partially online. Most students enroll in just a course or two and take the remainder of their classes at the high school, but some students do elect to take all of their classes through the online school. There's lots of benefits for this. The biggest is ultimately, they still get a Haverford diploma. That's the biggest enticement that most kids talk about. But they really do have a flexible schedule, they can participate in all the activities and athletics, and they can still go to Haverford High School for all those wonderful hands-on electives that we offer there, too. Why do students choose this experience? Sometimes it is credit recovery, sometimes it is a conflict within their schedule, sometimes it is anxiety, sometimes they really like the way the courses are laid out. For some students who are like to see things where they can only do the next assignment when they finish the assignment, it's very good for them. But it is also very important, as students go through this experience, that they realize that you have to be motivated to log in and continue plodding along through the course. It is not for students who may log in and think that, well, five days from now, I can log in and get caught up. You really do have to be dedicated and conscientious and go through it on a regular basis. Sometimes it is as an alternative to an out-of-district placement, and sometimes we have some very high-achieving athletes who are full-time professional skaters or full-time something outside of Haverford, and their training schedule is so rigorous that this is the best opportunity for them. Students who have IAPs can also take these courses. Courses can be modified through the combination of the teacher, the case manager, the online support teacher, and if they are receiving related services, they'll still receive them at the high school. The instructional settings for the school, it can be at their home, can be anywhere, they've got an internet connection. Some take them while they're at the high school, either in study halls or in the library, and some will come here to Oakmont where we have a student lounge, which is a supportive environment, especially for students who do have anxiety in the larger settings. Here's a picture of the student lounge, it happens to be right down the hall. It's a very informal setting. I visit the lounge probably at least twice a week, and generally, when I visit, there's two to five to seven students that are always there at various times between 11:30 and 2:30 in the day, working with our online support teacher. At this time, there are 43 general education students and 15 special education students enrolled. They're taking over 50 different courses for math, science, English, social studies. We do offer world languages and electives, as well as phys ed and health, all through this model. Presently, there's over 20 teachers who are supporting them. Basically, each teacher supports somewhere between one and three courses, and the curriculum is offered through a variety of options. Our primary option that we're using right now for the majority of our courses is called Apex, and it's basically an online curriculum, but it needs an adult to then grade the assignments that are produced by the students, and that's what our teachers do. There are actually rubrics already generated for the teacher, so the student goes through, does some reading, some writing, that written assignment gets sent to the teacher, and the teacher can use a rubric to grade what they've done. Our math students are generally in an Alex math program, which is an adaptive program. It is very much like if you're familiar with the Khan Academy, it is based upon mastery learning, but it's more significant than the Khan Academy, it's a little bit more robust. But it is, it has instructional videos and instructional text, and then students will do many math problems, and once they've reached a certain level of mastery, it'll open up the next module for them. And occasionally, we have students who will enroll in the Brandywine Virtual Academy. This is something that we basically subcontract out when there's a student that's interested in a course that we don't have available through Apex or Alex. That's our last option that we then pursue, what do they have as an option? This is a graph of the enrollment trend since the Haverford Online School started in 2009, 2010. I believe we had, how many students the first year, Nicole? It might have been five students the very first year. And it is, it's a difficult number to nail down. Kids are constantly moving in and out of this, so it's, when I say 58 students, if I honestly looked yesterday, it might be 59 or it might be 57. It's constantly, students are making decisions which direction they're going to go in. The program has been very successful. Generally, more than 90% of the students are successfully passing their courses. For students who don't pass, summer school and other options are pursued. Over the past five years, 15 of 24 students have passed the Keystone exams. Most students who take these classes choose to take the Keystone subjects at the brick-and-mortar school. They choose to generally take, you know, biology or the Keystone literature, the algebra at Haverford High School. And so you can see over five years, only 24 students have been eligible, but still, 15 of them have been successful. Students really cite the flexibility of these classes as a reason for that success. Those students that are taking one or two courses generally really like that flexibility, and that helps them become very successful. This is a rough comparison of costs. There's an awful lot of estimations that go in here, but if all 58 of those students were to go full-time to a cyber charter school, it would cost over $1 million. Obviously, I've already said, these 58 students are not going full-time. But still, the comparison of that cost to what we pay for the students to take the courses at the high school, where we're buying licenses and we are paying a half teacher salary, and we're also paying hourly wages and benefits to the additional 20 teachers that are supporting them. And that, to date, has cost about $65,000. So it is significantly less expensive. Obviously, it would be less expensive if they took a partial role at the cyber charters, but they don't have that option to begin with, so it is hard to compare the two. This is just a graph comparing the two, what it would look like. The supports that exist, these students get the support of the general education teachers. As you heard in the stories that I opened up with, oftentimes, you know, we do have a supporting teacher that's over here, but sometimes the students really struggling in, you know, we have a couple in AP Government and AP US History, and those teachers will personally meet with the students for a half hour, for an hour, either at the high school or over here. Same thing with our math students. Those students will check in with the math teacher over at the high school, or the teacher may come over here. Special education teachers and the case managers still exist, and they're constantly monitoring how the students are doing. The school counselors are constantly monitoring how the students are doing. So as students are struggling, it's not just one teacher and one child that looks at, hey, this child's struggling. There's a whole team that can approach the parents and make plans for how to help the student be successful. Home and school visitors and the building-level administration all get involved when students are struggling or starting to have issues. We all work together to figure out how to support that student to be more successful. Again, how do they enroll? Generally, with their school counselors. It's part of the process there, you know, as students were doing course selection for next year, kids were already talking about registering for these online classes for next year, students that are in them presently and other students who are interested in taking them. Incoming students, once they register with the district, will often call me or come in and visit with me, and I'll walk them through the program, give them a tour of the building, and then ultimately, they still get a high school guidance counselor who sits down with them and plans out what does this look like towards graduation. Sometimes students enrolled here thinking they were going to take only online classes, and then by the time they come in the door and meet with the guidance counselor, they still decide to take a class or two at the high school. And again, that flexibility and freedom really is what contributes to the success of the program. For those that are watching from home that are interested, this is my contact information, and I can certainly talk about it more personally on a personal level with anybody that's Any questions?
Dr. Nesbit, I'm currently enrolled with Apex. I'm taking the US government course online, just I met with my counselor. I knew for a while that I wanted to do this because I knew it wouldn't fit in my schedule, and it's been very flexible, I really like it. Thank you.
Great.
Student stories. I love the student, thank you.
It's a graduation requirement, so it had to happen one way or another.
And that happened.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thanks for your stories, Dr. Nesbit. Makes it more personal for all of us.
What are the constraints now in offering this program or expanding it?
There are not many constraints, no. There are, you know, baking. Will always be offered at the high school. I don't anticipate that we'll have an online baking class, but, you know, those hands-on electives are a little limited, and the upper-level world languages are a little bit limited. But beyond that, pretty much anything is possible.
Yeah, it sounds like a great option, and I've even seen some discussion kind of in the news or in education forums about having an experience with an online class being something that could be looked at as a graduation requirement, since that's the way a lot of people learn, not just in school settings, but on the job, and having those skills while they're a high school student could be really beneficial.
It's definitely a different experience, and it's important that kids realize how different it is, and it is absolutely growing in post-high school. I know probably most of our master's degrees that we're approving at this point in time, you know, every teacher that I speak with that's taking classes, it's generally through an online program.
And just to add, I think what makes our program really special and distinguishes it from some other local high school programs is the work that the teachers do. Very often, it's online, and you might be able to have virtual contact with an instructor, but to be able to sit down with a teacher next to you if you want that, that is really something special, and we want to make sure that, you know, we are looking actually at the possibilities of how do we make this an attractive option for all students, so we can maybe expand the program if that's what sort of is the demand. And we also want to make sure that we can offer it in the same way with that element, because I really believe it's what makes it successful. Again, back to teacher appreciation, yeah.
And so, just another clarifying question. Are these classes only available during the traditional, like, school year, school semester? They line up with that? Would there be an option for a student who wanted to take a class over the summer or something like that?
So there's, at the present time, the majority of it is offered during that nine month from September to June. There is a, there are a few math enrichment options for summer school that have existed using the same Alex program, where if a student wants to move forward in their math continuum, that has been offered. We have not yet opened it up to other subject areas.
Other questions, comments from the board? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nesbit. As I mentioned, we'll now move on and share an update about the work that's been going on this year toward our audit. Just if you recall, our audit process is cyclical, which means we examine a particular content area, K through 12, in a year. We start by taking a look at what's going on here internally. We look at our resources, we look at what our teachers are doing, we look at our success rate as measured by various assessments, and then next, we look outward. So what do the journals say we should do? What does the literature say? What are really high-performing districts doing? And we look at what are the standards? How have they changed? And we compare the two. How is what we're doing here compared with what we believe we should be doing now based on what we've learned? And we already shared some information about our internal audit with this audience previously, I believe it was back in February, and so we're going to conclude that audit now, and I'm going to turn it over to Sandy for much of that work.
So, good evening. I want to thank Ms. Saxa, Dr. Rusi, the school board, everyone who's here tonight and those who are watching online for being here to just see the update on our audit. We want to thank all the teachers, and let me find my, there we go. I want to thank all the teachers. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, so we're really lucky. We have a huge list of teachers, as you can see here. Principals have been involved. I found, in looking at this list, I want to also call out Ms. Natalia Lizzie, who's here, who's been at every social studies audit meeting for the high school. We've had so many people participating in this important work. Tonight, we also have Mr. Ryan Kaviglia, who is going to be presenting a book for adoption tonight, who's here. Wave your hand, there you go. So we're really excited to have him here to represent the department as well. And as you can see, in just a second, we have been very busy. So just an update and a little bit of a reminder about our internal analysis. When we were here last, we reported on this part of the audit. We found that we had some older resources, and our supplemental materials were sort of varied, depending on which school we were in or what grade level, and an increased attention to cultural proficiency has been happening throughout this year. So that's one of the benefits of things that have been going on. There's a desire for more elective offerings at the high school and a need for financial literacy. Our students enjoy social studies and are doing well on our standardized and national assessments, thanks to an increase in reading and writing and social studies. And tonight, we'll share the results of the parent and student surveys that we told you about. Our external analysis was extensive. We have reviewed a variety of resources, including, as Ms. Saxa mentioned, the PA Curriculum Framework, College and Career and Civic Life Framework, which is the C3 Framework, and also the PA Academic Standards, as well as the National Standards. We reviewed other districts' curriculum, visited their school, and attended conferences. We increased our knowledge of disciplinary literacy, so the committee has been very, very We have learned about some additions we want to make to our best practices. So we've researched what is out there for teaching social studies and how things have changed, and we found a shift to building more inquiry into our instruction, which the teachers reflect will more greatly engage students, and that's what we're looking for. We want kids who are excited about social studies. We can do this by using concepts to teach content. For example, instead of learning about a society or region in a more isolated study in sixth grade, for example, students might be asked a compelling question like, was agriculture good for humans? This could guide their learning about developments in several ancient societies to determine their response to that question. This type of instruction helps us This type of instruction helps us to include the four major types of thinking, which are analytical, critical, chronological, and increasing the amount of strategic thinking, which is problem-solving. So why do we want to do that? We want to make connections. We want to help students make connections between what they're learning and other things that they're learning to lead to further inquiry, and also to make connections to their world. The result will be deeper thinking, greater retention and transfer, and higher student engagement. So, we'll begin with the parent survey trends from the high school. Out of our high school parents, this is about 10%, 164 respondents. But it was interesting, you'll see that there's some connections between the high school and middle school parent results. 80% believe they were prepared for high school. You can read these numbers. 70% current classes were building interest in social studies. And then, we found that there might not be as much of a connection to the real world that students were seeing, as well as being prepared for college, career, and civic life. So that's something that we learned from best practices. That's something we want to increase, and it's something that our parents are also saying we probably should be increasing. However, the great news is that a lot of the resources we've been using, they feel are appropriately challenging. Continuing with the high school survey trends. When asked what the students enjoyed most in social studies, parents identified discussion, debate, inquiry, or questioning, and Socratic seminar as the top four activities. This aligns also with the recommendations of what we're learning about best practice and social studies instruction. When asked what they liked to see more of, they chose, again, discussion, debate, Socratic seminar, and inquiry, those kinds of things. Or they said nothing. We didn't need to change anything. So this shows us that our instructional delivery is working and that we should continue to use instructional strategies that build discourse and inquiry. When asked what they would like to see less of, they overwhelmingly said nothing. So they like what we're doing in social studies. Occasionally, homework was something that they mentioned that we should consider, so we will definitely be looking at homework as well. When asked about favorite courses, AP Psychology, AP World, Criminal Justice System were the top choices. However, many of the respondent students have not taken some of the electives, so they weren't able to respond. These same electives were chosen when asked what students plan to take in the future. In addition to AP US History, Global Conflicts, and Sociology were a few others that they were talking about. In order to determine which type of additional electives to offer, parents were asked what level of electives they would like to see offered, for instance, more APs, more honors, more academic classes, and they said they'd like to see more honors or electives, although many were satisfied with our current elective choices. When given a list of topics, parents preferred courses related to environmental studies, the law, social justice, women's studies, and local history. Parents were also given the opportunity to share their comments, which were overwhelmingly positive, and we will use those comments as we continue to develop our curriculum. Our middle school parent survey trends were very similar as far as their numbers go. 60% believe that elementary prepared them for middle school, and they really believe that their current social studies classes are building interest in social studies, so that's great. Again, we need to increase our connection to the real world and our class experiences to help students prepare for college, career, and civic life, although 33%, we're not sure, because maybe they don't know what is needed in college or their students' careers because the kids are only in middle school. And we actually didn't even ask this question of elementary school parents. And again, our resources seem to be appropriately challenging at the middle school. As you can see, like the high school, parents report that their students like discussion and debate, as well as projects and research. If there's anything to increase, they suggested more discussion and debate, which, and perhaps some fewer projects. Overall, parents chose nothing to decrease. In fact, overwhelmingly, nothing to decrease. The parent survey trends for elementary school were also similar. Again, they feel like the students are interested in social studies and continuing to learn about it, and we need to make more class connections and instructional connections to their real world. So that's really going to be a focus of what we work on as we go forward. Here you can see the activities that were most enjoyed by students, and I put up both graphs this time because there were so many things that parents want to see more of. But on the left, the activities enjoyed most by students, again, were discussion and not so much debate, but projects, things like that, where students were actively involved. On the right, they want to see pretty much more of everything, and that's part of what we're working on in elementary school, is to develop more our social studies curriculum, to make it engaging, which they're feeling it's engaging, but to develop more, so that it's more consistent, and so it's happening more across the curriculum. We also are going to use their comments to help celebrate what teachers are doing and also to help improve our instruction. Finally, we also collected information from parents who are interested in being part of a focus group, so that we can contact them to get more information as we go forward with our development. Our next slide talks about the survey trends for the high school students. They were asked to complete a survey that had very similar questions. Many of them, but not as many as their parents thought, felt they were believed for, prepared for high school. And again, they feel like their classes are building interest in social studies, but we think we could see that number go a little bit higher, and that may be through offering some additional electives, which we're going to talk about. They do see more of a connection to their real world, but they're not sure that they're being prepared for college, career, and civic life. So we're going to, again, continue to work on building that connection. And it was an interesting thing. One of the reasons that we asked this question was so that when we, when we come back and ask the students after we've implemented some revisions into the curriculum, whether or not they now feel that they have more connection to college, career, and civic life. So we kind of wanted to see before, and then we can do an after and see whether or not there's any change in those numbers. The activities that the students enjoyed most were discussion, debate, Socratic seminar, inquiry, and projects. Not really a surprise, and they like to see more debate, discussion, and Socratic seminar. So, some things, I have one more slide, yeah. So, some of the things that we want to enhance during our curriculum development are some additions, and going a little bit deeper into the explorers of the US, Reconstruction, Indigenous Peoples, financial literacy, and civics. So some of these things were found either missing or slightly underrepresented, and so we want to make sure that we look at increasing these. Some recommendations that we're going to make are very exciting. Although we're doing really well as a district, and we've, you know, seen a lot of the ways that our students are doing well, the committee has made a few adjustments that they're going to suggest, that we can realign our curriculum with the recommendations from the state and to add to our best practices. We're going to be updating or replacing some resources with primary and secondary sources and some trade books where possible. We're going to align our curriculum to the PA curriculum framework and the C3, which is that college, career, civic life framework, as well as to build inquiry design model units, which will lead each of the units with compelling questions that students will ask, which we can then come back and assess them by, and really help to build that level of inquiry that students are saying they're interested in. We want to infuse more cultural proficiency throughout. We're going to shift the high school course pathway, which we'll talk about in a second, increase some elective offerings, which we think will help to engage students, add some financial literacy, so all students graduate from Haverford with some personal finance information, and align our curriculum to the new civics exam requirement.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Why is financial literacy part of social studies and not a part of the business education curriculum where it is now?
So it is part of the business education curriculum right now, but one of the reasons why we're going to bring in the personal finance piece of it is so that all students, there is not a requirement for everyone to take a business course, but there is a requirement for all students to graduate with the four social studies credits, and so this way we'll know that all students have had this preparation. They'll go into it in more depth in their business class if they choose to take the financial literacy class in business. However, we want to make sure that everybody has some common understanding, so that we don't have children racking up credit card bills when they get to college with a, you know, almost an emergency kind of credit card, and then all of a sudden they're buying coffee with it, or, you know, overdrafting accounts, and just so that they understand a little bit more about how money works.
So it's going to be taught by the social studies teachers?
Yeah. It will, it will come under the context of economics. So there's going to be a government civics and economics course that's developed, and Sandy did a lot of homework with regards to this. There are a couple of options that the state will likely put out about where you could put financial literacy, should they require it. Social studies is one of them. And, and so what we're looking at is we're going to be looking at the larger context of economics and then shift it down to what does that mean for personal economics as well. The team, do they already go? They're going? They already went to go see how this is delivered in a neighboring school district, a high-performing neighboring school district. Sandy reached out to our social studies coordinator for the state at the Pennsylvania Department of Education, who jumped right on board and said, absolutely, here's the standard it fits under, this is why it would make sense in social studies, because we sort of had the same question for ourselves. Is this the appropriate place? And it turns out that this is a place where this can and will be addressed. So continuing with that, because that will be one of our courses that is adjusting, you can see the new course pathway up here. So the new path would have us having ninth grade US History. In the past, it was Western Civilizations. Tenth grade will have World History. And the last time I was here, I talked a little bit about sort of going out from what you know out to the world and applying it out to the world, and we found that that, that will make sense. So our ninth grade US History is going to build on eighth grade US History, and then we're going to apply that out and say, well, so this is how we are as the United States. Let's apply that out to the world. And that World History class is also going to include some topics from Western Civilizations, but because we're not going to be doing Plato to NATO, we're not going to be doing everything that ever happened in the world, we're going to be looking at concepts across content, we'll be able to, to do this. Now, it's not that it's not a daunting task. There's going to be a lot of work ahead of us, but the teachers are ready for it, and I think it's going to be really interesting for, for students. Yeah. I just want to also give credit, when Sandy went to some conferences locally, she made contacts at the state. We have had, I'm not sure how many times Sally has been out, three or four times. We now have a relationship with the people who coordinate social studies at the state level. She has been out four times, worked with our high school teachers, our social studies teachers, our audit team. She is coming out, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, 12 days this summer to sit down and assist and support with curriculum writing, particularly in the area of this inquiry design model, which is sort of a new way of thinking. She's been at the forefront of developing it in other areas, and we're very excited to have her support and expertise when working with teachers to do this. That being said, I've already heard from a teacher who said, I made a unit, let's look at it. So we do have people who are ready to jump on board, and we're excited to have, you know, all of that happening throughout the summer as well. Yeah, it's exciting stuff.
Does this pathway start in September?
No. Oh, no, sorry, to clarify. We have, we will not be starting this this year. We will be developing these units. We are going to spend some days this summer, because then we're not distracted by trying to make up lesson plans and grade papers and all the things that happen during the school year that's so busy. So we're going to see if we can get some framework in place in the summertime with Sally's assistance. Teachers are willing to come in, and I'm thrilled that they, that they can do that, and then we'll have some framework that then we can continue to build on throughout the year and hopefully not be overwhelmed. Our 11th grade class then is going to be, it was called Government, and it was in 12th grade, now it's going to be in Civics, Government, and Economics will be the name, and that will include, it'll be the culminating class for the civics and the financial literacy piece, right, through the economics. So we will be hitting on those things, and that will be the place where they will sort of say, we've, we've done those things, and we can pass our civics exam, we'll have our financial literacy background. And there's, it still will have a great focus on Government, because that has been traditionally the class, you know, we've had a Government class traditionally. And then in 12th grade, what's really exciting is that the students will still be taking a fourth elective or a fourth credit, but they'll be able to do that with two electives that they're really interested in. All of a sudden, if they want to take something on Women's Studies, Environmental Studies, they're really interested in conspiracy theory or the law, whenever we develop these electives, which we haven't done yet, but we will, they could do that. Or maybe they took World History, and they really loved the European part of it, and they want to take AP Euro. So all of a sudden, they can take another AP. One of the other things that's important, and it's not clear on this slide, is that all of these classes are being offered at the AP level, the college prep level, the honors level, so there will be different levels of classes for students to be able to take for all of those courses that are listed there. Okay? Let's see, what else? Oh, so the benefits of that. Did you have some else? Okay. So the benefits of this are, as we were just saying, gives more opportunities for students to take different things, they'll have their financial literacy education, it will prepare the students for their civics exam and be able to give them the information they need. And as we do this, everything we're doing, we're going through the four lenses of civics, government, economics, and history. Those are the four areas. So all of our compelling questions will be coming across those four areas, and all of those areas will be studied in all grade levels, starting as young as kindergarten, a little bit of that will be happening in kindergarten, and we won't just be learning about ourselves in kindergarten, but we will be looking outward, which I know was something we talked about the last time. Oh, I wanted to say also, there's a book at the bottom. That picture at the bottom is the Ways of the World book, which Mr. Coviglia, who is representing the social studies department here today, did a very thorough book adoption rubric, that he compared a couple of different textbooks and completed just a lovely rubric and all kinds of reflection on why one text was better than another. This text provides not only a lot of primary sources, every chapter ends with primary sources, but a much greater representation of diverse peoples, genders, races, all of that kind of thing. So it was much more representative than the other texts that we were looking at. It's also less expensive, he tells me, which is really good. But that wasn't why we chose it, so. We'll be getting that. That will be happening in the fall, and the reason that we wanted to jump ahead and get that resource was because not only has the AP World test changed, they, it used to cover 250,000 years, and it's now down to 1200 AD to the present? Yes, it's now Modern World History, starting in 1200 AD. That's very modern. And, yeah, I'd love to have you come up and talk.
And I'll just note, as Mr. Coviglia is making his way up here, this is a book that we have presented to our board curriculum liaisons this evening. They are going to have some time to review it, take a look at it, ask any questions that we have, and that if there is no further inquiry that needs to occur, it may appear on the next board meeting's business agenda, or if there's more research we need to do or other answers we need to find, we'll just put it on the next one or whenever it is appropriate.
Yeah, just if, I don't know if there's any questions regarding the book, but just to, to be clear, the AP World curriculum has been changed by the College Board amid much controversy in the previous year from educators and former students in the course nationally alike, to be a course that originally had gone from the onset of humankind, right, very broadly, to a course that was supposed to be made more tenable by being trimmed all the way up to 1450 AD. And the compromise for people that were upset about losing so much of earlier history was, well, we'll cut it back to 1200. So it starts at 1200. They're, they're claiming they're going to consider an ancient course. I don't know if that's going to happen, but it allows us to go more in-depth, certainly, with less content. That said, the book will continue to have, this is the newest version of this, which has that many more AP prep materials now integrated into the book. The earlier version of this book, which you've used since the course's inception, since 2011, has served us very well, and I think students would agree with that, because of the diversity of perspectives, and there's extensive primary documentation in the book visually and with regard to documents from both the, basically the so-called victors of history, right, and also those shocked by the victors of history, right? So this, this version seems that much more extensive in that regard, and in comparing it to another book that one of our neighboring districts that offers the course uses, it was far more extensive already in that regard in its current iteration, and not much more so in the new version. So I think it'll give us the opportunity to present on older history that's being technically cut from the content of the course, but still students will need perspective on, to have a better sense of why the history we have to cover is being covered, so they can relate that back to what the College Board is excised, but we still find valuable, I think, so. Thank you very much.
And it will come as no surprise that our students do very well in the AP World History exam, as you can see why. We have excellent rec... We have excellent resources and amazing teachers.
Our high school elective offerings, currently, the elective offerings are on the left. And I am really proud to say that we offer a lot of electives, even in the current list. Our teachers would like to offer more, and our students, I think, are interested in having some additions or revisions to our elective offerings. But even compared to our neighboring districts, we are offering a lot of electives. So the ones on the right is the list of electives that may be developed depending on what we find looking at the student and the parent survey results. So it's exciting to see. We could have, and the AP Human Geography is a course that we have, Mr. Kaviglia already has. How many with your independent study?
We've had four total, and we'll have at least four more next year.
Four more next year. So he has a lot of students doing this on an independent study. So we're going to, you know, probably propose that course as one of the electives. And so even offering a new AP is really exciting for us. So this is part of, all of this will happen with our course selection. And when we start to see what students are interested in, then we'll know what we can bring to you, which is next year. So looking ahead, we will be developing the units aligned with the C-3 and the Pennsylvania curriculum framework. We'll be continuing to review resources and recommendations for core resource adoption. And so we'll be bringing more of that to you next year, in the fall and next year. And this final slide is a picture of some of our students and Mr. Tara Borelli, who won the Governor's Civics Award. They got the gold level award for this just two days ago, I think, right? Just two days ago. So we're really, really proud of everything that's happening at the high school and throughout the district. Do you have any questions?
I was curious about the surveys. Looks like there's a focus on activities that everyone enjoys. So I was curious, were there parts of the survey, or was it considered that you might ask about the content that students are engaging with and whether they feel like they see themselves in the curriculum? I'm thinking too about the approach of like mirrors, windows, and doors.
Oh, right.
Where, you know, you want to see yourself in what you're learning. You want to have a window and a glimpse into other cultures and lived experiences and histories, and also adore to be, become eventually an agent for social change. So is that a consideration? Like, I guess my question is, what was the focus on activities? What was the reasoning behind that?
Well, we were looking at instructional strategies and the way the instruction was being delivered. The way the content is being delivered right now, we're sort of going to be shifting about it from content to concepts, but we don't want to lose the content. So we are interested in that, and that is a good idea. I think part of the other piece of it was being, you know, are you seeing yourself being prepared? And so it was reflecting on that, whether or not they see a connection to their real life. But I think you're right.
And we also, we did ask about the content, and it's a, the level of challenge that they felt. But it's a good idea. We should have asked that, particularly for social studies. I am heartened, though. I am happy to remember that we did ask students about that when we administered the PSSM, which was the psychological school membership survey that we had over 3,000 students, how many students?
Yes, almost 4,000.
Almost 4,000 students respond. And one of the questions was about seeing yourself in what you're learning. So we do have information about that, but it is not specific to social studies. So we still have a middle school student survey to put out. I think we just thought of a new question. So we will do that. And we can always do that in some post-work as well. Thanks.
I just have one quick thing.
Sure.
In looking at, social studies offers a lot of AP courses, but a lot of them students aren't able to take until their junior or senior year. Is there any, like, could you just look to see, like, could AP Psychology be made available to sophomores or Economics or something like that? Because it's kind of limiting for sophomores. If they'd like to take an AP course, it appears that the two most likely are world history, which is the whole year, or like AP Computer Science, which is half-year. But there aren't other options for students kind of to try out one class at the sophomore level?
Sure. There actually will be an AP at every level now. So there at every grade level, right? So in ninth grade, there'll be AP US.
Yep.
And then at 10th grade, there'll be AP World, 11th grade, AP Gov. But also, they can take an elective at any time. And so one of the things that the counselors will be talking to students about, if they feel the students are prepared and able to do it, is to say, "Well, in addition to this class, would you like to take another class? Would you like to take an elective, take an AP?" So these electives, those APs, will be available at different times. That's something we're also considering. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Sandy has certainly been very busy.
The next item on our conference agenda is our proposed final budget. Mr. Reeb?
Following year's budget is always approved three different intervals. In the current year, it's a site-based budget. So all these department and school budgets are, all come together in between October and January. And we add salaries and benefits and debt service and some other district expenditures. And we come up with this large number. And the first interval where we approve the budget is a preliminary budget in February, early February. And that is kind of like the whole budget just being all put together. It's a gross budget. And from that point on, we work on refining it and putting together, putting together more accurate numbers all the way through. Salaries, benefits, we might add some salaries. We get numbers from our healthcare consortium, and it just becomes more refined. So the next step is May 9th, where we approve a proposed final budget. And this is the administrators wouldn't say final budget, but it's what we're throwing out is roughly our final budget for the end of the year. Then in June, assuming we don't find any changes, that would be the final budget. And that's the working budget that we use for next year. And it gets implemented in July, and everybody works with that budget. So we are, we're at the Act 1 index, which is 2.3%. So that is the ceiling from which we can increase our taxes. We weren't eligible for any Act 1 exceptions. We only had two. They were for special ed. And what else? But we weren't eligible for any. So our medical premiums and prescription increase has been very low. The reason why is because the consortium that we're in has, our premiums were higher in the last couple of years, higher than what our claims were. So we had a fund balance in the healthcare trust. So in order to get that number down, we have to, we only had to increase our medical premium 2%. And our prescription increase was 3%. As you can see, the PSCRS employer rate is now at 34.29%. We get half of that back on the revenue side as a subsidy from the state. So for every dollar we pay out in salaries, 34% goes out to Peasers. And then we get, you know, 15, 16% of it back in the form of subsidy. We have a number of new positions in the budget. We have one assistant principal at the elementary level. We have two and a half general ed at the high school. Three general ed at the middle school. One and a half special ed teachers. A .5 reading specialist at the elementary level. A guidance counselor, an autistic support teacher, and a transportation router for the transportation department. This is a look at our district enrollment. As you can see, we're somewhere around 6,500 projected for the 2019, 20 fiscal year. So as you can see, we're going up. If you look at the next slide, this is the staff growth. So if you kind of look a little bit, they do kind of correspond, as you can see. And it's almost like we tried to keep the staffing at a level state. And then with all the extra enrollment, we didn't have a choice but to add staff in 2018 and 1920. So they're very similar. This was the adopted preliminary budget that we approved back in February. It was 129,974,000. We had a over $4 million shortfall. Part of that was covered by the 2.3% increase in taxes, which brought in 2,195,000. But it left a gap or a use of our fund balance or our savings account of 1.8 million dollars. So we needed to get that refined, to get that number down, to get as close as we can to balancing the budget. So what we did was we looked through the budgets. We tried to look for accuracy, more accurate areas, areas to reduce our budget. As you can see, we had a lot of plans in technology, and we're going to spend that over a couple of years in order to reach our goal, but not spend it all at one time. We reduced utilities, medical prescription. We had reduced from a higher number that we had in when we saw what the consortium had for percentages for us. Debt service, you can see a large number there. We refinanced a series of 2010A, and that saved us half a million dollars in this budget. And we'll save another half a million dollars in next year's budget, I mean, in 1920 and 2021. And we also reduced our variable rate debt. We had interest earnings at 4%, but we're not going to be near that. So we were able to reduce that number. Also, down at the bottom, we see a lot of ads. We, one of the things I do before we get to this final budget is I go through everyone's site-based budget, and I look to make sure everybody has everything in. Transportation software had been omitted. George was working hard. He's driving buses and working as a director. He's got a lot going on. So the transportation software dropped, fell through the cracks. And then we added some things like board docs, which we talked about on the approvals tonight, and also the financial software. And we also added some other items. We added $10,000 for 100% green energy. Provident Energy, who's our consultant, we had asked them about six months ago how much it would cost to go all green. They had two different options. One was nuclear plus solar plus wind and so forth. And then there was one that was 100% green, which was solar, wind, and all. It didn't even include nuclear. And that was, they negotiated down to $10,000. And basically, what we're doing is we're taking a share of that green energy that's coming through there, and that becomes ours, earmarked ours. So obviously, if more people buy into the green energy and say, "I want green energy," they have to pay a little more, a premium right now. But then that creates a demand for that, and then you create more solar. You create more wind and, you know, and it becomes a larger thing. So that whole total of adjustments added up to $922,000 in reductions. We had a couple of adjustments to the revenue side. We adjusted our real estate collection to our five-year history, and we were able to add a little bit of extra real estate money. And our interest earnings are higher. So we were able to add $100,000 to our estimated revenue on the, for interest earnings. And what that did is it provided expenditure budget 129,523,33, which left a shortfall of 2,864,000. Again, the 2.3% increase in taxes brought in 2,195,000. So that left our shortfall at 669,000 right now. And that's where we stand for our proposed final budget. Usually, you don't spend all the way up to your expenditure budget. It includes an $800,000 budgetary reserve in case you do overspend every item. But I don't anticipate that. Last year's budget had, or this current year's budget had a $600,000 shortfall. And we're looking to be probably 100, a million dollars in the black, according to my estimation. So there is a lot of conservative numbers in there. And when the conservative numbers pan out on your side, then you usually end up having, both on the revenue and expenditure side, some nice variances. So this is the revenue budget. It's not real easy to see, but the top part, you can see on the right, there's a number. That's all local sources of revenue, real estate, transfer tax, interest earnings. And you can see 80, almost 81% of all our revenues come from local sources. The 7,000 series there is all state subsidies that we receive. That's between 17 and 18%. So between, you know, between the two of those, you're at almost 98% of your budget. And then federal programs is only 1.4% of our overall revenue budget. This is our expenditure budget. Over on the right, you can see salaries. The increase in salaries is 42% of our increase in our budget. Benefits is 35%. So 77%, 77% of our increase in our budget is due to salary and benefit increases. We have contracted services, which is primarily IU services, special ed services is 4.5%. Utilities and maintenance is up 6.6%. And that's because we have a full $300,000 in there for capital expenditures, or small capital expenditures, which we reduced in the 18, 19 year. We cut that in half to reduce the budget, and now we're back up at 300,000. So that's the reason for that number. Purchased services is, involves special ed tuition and involves insurance and charter school and tuition, and also the payment that we make to the community college. And you can see that's up 7%. And then supplies, which is really books and supplies and software, is up 4.9%. Debt services, you can see, because we had a huge refinancing on the series of 2010A, is actually a reduction. And we should probably next year be level because we're getting savings next year on that refinancing. So our debt service should be in pretty good shape. But those are where the source of all our increases on the expenditure side. Here's a five-year average. As you can see, the increase over five years is only 2.56%. That's really good. I don't think you can beat that. We were at, most of those numbers are index numbers. So we stayed at the Act 1 index. The Act 1 index is a kind of a blend between two different indexes. The CPI, and I think it's SAW, which is the statewide average wage. And they blended together. And so we've stayed at that rate for five years. So we're doing pretty well. We have tonight's approval of the adopted proposed final budget. And then June 13, we'll be adopting the final budget, and that'll be the working budget for next year. Anybody have questions?
Questions, comments from the board?
Just a comment. I appreciate the work that went into this and to try to get us a budget that was closer to being balanced. I think it looks good. And some of the takeaways, I think, are the reliance on local funds and that, you know, we have to manage those very carefully. Even with the building projects, I know have gotten a lot of the board's attention recently and, you know, planning for the financing of that. It's reassuring to see that the growth in this budget is very much focused on salaries and, which reflects the programs and students. in this budget is very much focused on salaries and, which reflects the programs and student services and that we're able to maintain, you know, the same level of debt service even as we embark on this building project. So I think, I think this looks like, you know, a good budget to be working with as we have another month to see if anything changes, but it's a good.
It's a good budget. We were limited to the 2.3% in next year. Should be eligible for an exception, so probably the number's going to be higher because we are borrowing $60 million and Linwood's already started. We borrowed nine million out of the 60 million so far, so we'll be borrowing another nine million next year. And when these bond issues start, you know, kicking in, you gotta pay for it, you know? You have to get the revenue level up where the expenditures are. So I'm not saying that's going to be a huge number, but instead of being at 2.3, it might be at 3.3%. And what we've been doing is projections, four-year projections, where you do the current year's budget and then three years projected out so that we can make sure that we fit the budget, the debt service into the budget, that it works, you know, that it doesn't put us in a bind that we can't, you know, we can't cover our expenditures with our revenues. So once we get this budget together in the fall, I'll be putting a projection together of the next three years. And it's basically a working, you know, projection that we can make sure that, you know, we're in good shape every year, so.
I just want to say I'm excited to see that we're going to 100% green energy. That's excellent news. No, I think it's a small price to pay to reduce our carbon footprint and I'm hoping that we set an example for other districts to follow.
Other questions or comments from the board?
It's 100% green electric, right?
Yeah.
It's not like the whole district is 100% green.
It's electric and...
Anything else? Okay, on to the business meeting. Item number five, for information purposes only, the secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes proof of publication as it relates to bid advertising for a nine-passenger van. Likewise, item number six, secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes the proof of publication as it relates to the location change for the May 23, 2019 public board meeting. Where is the May 23?
Here.
Okay. May 23 meeting is here.
Not at the high school.
Not at the high school. Thank you. Item number seven, I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the April 25, 2019 regular public board meeting.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, I'll accept a motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This one's a, we'll call this.
Dr. Allen Stuck?
Aye.
Dr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes, nine voting yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, I'll accept the motion to approve disbursements from the following fund as listed, general fund, $7,204,12.40.
Moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, I'll accept a motion to adopt the proposed final budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 totaling $129,052.
$129 million.
Excuse me.
You're in the room of teachers.
This amount includes 300,000 for capital expenditures and 800,000 in budgetary reserve. The proposed millage rate, 32.5305, an increase of .7314 mils or 2.3% over the 2018-19 millage rate of 31.7991.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution nominating the following individuals to serve as board members of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for a three-year term ending June 30, 2022. And the individuals are Anthony Johnson from Chesterupland, Edward Harris from Interboro, Charles E. Madden III from Radnor, Harry J. McIlwé from Ridley, and Sherri Monroe from Southeast Delco.
Moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, I'll accept a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Board Docs for the pro package, including software, onsite training, and support at a yearly cost of $10,500.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Could we hear a little bit about the benefits of Board Docs?
That will allow us to more efficiently, will allow our workflow to be more efficient in terms of generation of the board agendas and also will reduce the paper that's utilized in that process. That doesn't mean you have to be paperless here, but there, I don't know that people realize the amount of paper that is generated with various drafts of this agenda as we start preparing it and getting it ready. So there are other features in terms of searching and access to information from an historical perspective, but our most pressing need right now is to look at a more efficient workflow in preparation and the reduction of paper that we're using ourselves for the drafts.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, I'll accept a motion to approve an upgrade to the Infinite Visions financial slash HR software at a one-time cost of $74,012 for software and implementation and an annual service cost of $21,439.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Could someone describe what the capabilities of the software are, what it's going to do?
Actually, Ms. Larson, it's an upgrade to what we already have, so that has been in place since 2011? Eight?
A while.
Yeah. Yeah, for a very, you know, for a very long period of time. Again, there will be paper reduction that will be a result of that, but there will be also some online access to information that employees will have that they now just have to get in paper copies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, I'll accept a motion to approve a donation from the Haverford Education Foundation in the amount of $13,500 for an empowerment grant to be used for the establishment of the high school maker space.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, superintendent's report. Dr. Rushe.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I ask that you accept the retirements that are noted in item 1A and 1B.
Move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to accept the resignations that are identified in item 2A and 2B.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to approve the appointments as they are listed in item 3A through 3C.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Does that teacher in A and B get both rates on the same day? How does that work?
No. That individual will serve in the guaranteed sub position for just a short time before going into the sub X assignment, but should the sub X assignment end earlier than we thought, she'll go back into the guaranteed sub position. That's why it's done that way.
Got it. That's why we're approving both on the same time.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to approve the leaves of absence that are noted in item 4A and 4B.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I ask you to approve the student educational excursion that is described in item 5.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Rushe. Item number 16, board reports.
No report.
No report. Roger?
The finance liaisons met prior to this meeting to talk about, get a preview discussion of the proposed final budget, to talk with the auditor about some best practices in our business administration and about food services. And in addition, several of us were advocates for public education and I'm guessing Larry's going to talk about that, but it was a good day to go to Harrisburg and meet with our local representatives who cover the township and see their enthusiastic support for public education and they're on board with our goals for funding. We talked about cyber charters and the funding for those and support for building projects like the ones that we are embarking on.
Doc Martin?
Just one note that this past Sunday was at the 20th anniversary of the founding Robotics Club and it's a very robust group, a very diverse group, and it's just one of the examples that there's something for everybody's interest at Haverford. A second thing to say is I really appreciate the audit on the social studies. I happen to be a techie, a civil engineer, and this is arguable, but it's the end of engineering that has most interaction with the public and the people who do well personally and for what they accomplish in my field, the ones who have the best understanding of other people's values. And so we would never want to have a choice between STEM education and social studies. They're both essential for success.
I enjoyed Public School Advocacy Day. Larry's like a hero up there. Everybody walk around knows Larry and so we can get into a lot of higher-level meetings because Larry's there. So we met with the Chair of the Education Committee, who I thought was a little more radical before we met with him. Once I met with him, I was a little disappointed, but shouldn't say disappointed, but he's not going as far as I thought he was going to go. And also the Education Foundation run, I did not participate this year. Kristin Larson did, though. Congratulations to her. And it's just a nice event to see so many people from the community together on a sunny afternoon, raising money for education. So thank you to the foundation for that.
All right.
We heard a lot about upgrading and modernizing not only our curriculum, but also our technological infrastructure around information systems to help us deliver a upgraded and modern district. That being said, we are also upgrading and modernizing our facilities as well. Our enrollment's growing, so all of this means we have to keep up our pace with our financial health and so I appreciate the report tonight from Bob Regal and the business office and I also appreciate the taxpayers who are funding this awesome operation.
No report.
Susan?
The Delaware County Intermediate Unit is finally closing the books on their building. It's finished. It's beautiful and it's something that all of our students in Haverford as well as all over Delaware County can share. It really is quite, I'd love for everyone to get out there and say that it's beautifully done. I also attended the robotics celebration on Sunday. One of the things that interested me the most was they invited alumni, and I think the room was more full of alumni than it was for, right, this year's kids, which just shows you the importance of every act, every single activity that we do in the high school and the importance of keeping in touch with these kids and now using them as mentors. I was very impressed with the community of that group, so I was happy for the invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. A few things on the legislative side. We've been following Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 256 that both have to do with the way that cyber charters are funded. And we're making a little progress there. House Bill 256 has about 60 cosponsors so far and I think hopefully that'll continue to grow. Most of the Delaware County House delegation has signed on to co-sponsor that bill and we're working with the other folks who have not yet done so. This week, House Bill 800 passed the House. That is Speaker Turzai's pet bill to expand the education improvement tax credit program by $100 million and to also build in an automatic escalator clause so that in the future they won't need to debate in public whether to expand that program, that it will automatically increase the allocation for the program. And what's especially concerning about this is that the legislature did a good job coming up with a basic education funding formula about three years ago. There's a great many school districts that are grossly underfunded according to that formula. Statewide, the figure is about $3 billion and it just seems odd to be spending $100 million on private and religious schools when you're not funding the public schools that you're mandated to fund under the Constitution. EITC program primarily goes to private and religious schools. There's, some of that funding goes to things like education foundations. They've really done a good job constructing a law that it'll be difficult to ever get rid of. But just locally, for instance, Episcopal Academy, which is arguably the, you know, the premier private school on the main line, it will get a million dollars out of this program. And I just have a tough time understanding why Episcopal Academy needs to get diverted tax dollars. I think the alumni there are more than capable of raising money for kids to go to that school. So we're not sure where HB 800 will, it'll probably clear the Senate. The governor thus far has indicated that he doesn't have a great deal of enthusiasm for it, but whether that'll turn into a veto or not remains to be seen, so we'll certainly be paying attention to that one. The other issue is cyber, not cyber, but charter school reform. The charter school law's been in place for 20 years and the legislature has struggled year after year to try and reform what everybody agrees is a terrible law. For a variety of reasons, they've not been able to do that. Some of it has to do with political contributions. Anyway, when we did meet with the House Education Committee Chair, Kurt Sonny, he indicated that he would be dropping a package of four bills this week, which he did. It was voted out on party lines out of the House Ed Committee and those four bills are actually going to be run on Monday in the full House floor. So they're trying to push it through in a short period of time. And whereas we don't have local impact from brick and mortar charters, many districts around the state are particularly impacted and hampered. So we'll also be watching that package of bills. Both the EITC, the HB 800 bill and the charters typically could end up in what's called an omnibus bill at the end of the legislative session where they take everything that they haven't been able to pass individually and bundle it into one big bill and twist arms to try and get it to pass. So we'll see where it goes. It's been a busy time in some other regard. It's been a busy time in some other regards. On Saturday, the twenty-seventh, a number of us attended a board candidates workshop that was sponsored by the Education Policy and Leadership Center, Legal Women Voters, and the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. There were about forty attendees regionally from most of the suburban counties. Bridget, Sal, Dr. Ruscio, and I all attended, as did some of our local.
And me.
And Kristin, sorry. Some of our local school board candidates. I think it was time well spent, albeit an awfully long day. On Monday, the twenty-ninth, Kim, Sal, Bridget, and I attended Advocacy Day in the Capitol. We met with Dalen Leach, Representative Vitale, Representative Zabel, and those meetings pretty much were, thank you very much for your strong, solid support for public education. The items we discussed were school funding, cyber charter funding, and the building projects, Plan Con. We also, those meetings were also attended by our peers from the Radnor School Board, William Penn School Board, Upper Darby School Board. Late in the day, well, later in the day, we met with the House Education Committee Chairman, and in that meeting, we were joined by Susan Speck, who's the Executive Director of Education Voters PA, which is a statewide education, public ed advocacy organization, and also Tina Valetto, who's the Legislative Director at the Montgomery County IU. On Tuesday, April thirtieth, I had the pleasure of attending a luncheon at the Penn Graduate School of Education Superintendent Study Council with Dr. Ruscio and senior staff, but I was invited along with several senior PSBA members to honor Dr. Harris Sakoloff, who's served as the Director of that program for thirty-seven years. And I have great admiration for this guy. He's often been brought in as a moderator in contentious situations. He was the facilitator for the Campaign for Fair Education Funding and was able to keep sixty different organizations in the room for, you know, most of, most of the process. It didn't, you know, we didn't quite make it to the finish line, but he's, he'll be sorely missed and a good man. On Wednesday and Thursday, May first and second, I was invited to speak at the Annual Conference of the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools in State College. There were a hundred and twenty superintendents up there, and I spoke about funding cyber charters and advocacy, and it's always interesting to hear the perspectives of diverse public education stakeholders. And it was a very good conference. I also, I spoke in, the governor spoke before me and the Secretary of Education spoke after me, and I had an opportunity to speak with the Secretary of Education and let him know that we were somewhat disappointed in the governor's budget ask of two hundred million dollars, which barely covers pension payments for the five hundred school districts. Last but not least, as part of my PSBA duties for the past couple of months, I've had the opportunity to visit a lot of different school districts and primarily in the southeast, bringing state legislators and state senators in to visit those schools. I've been to Great Valley, Garnet Valley, Mathacton, Ridley, Interborough, William Penn, and Upper Darby. And one thing that's really stood out to me in those visits is what great work people are doing in our public schools. And, you know, we need to do a better job of letting people know what great work is going on in our public schools. So that's about enough of that. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, retirements, and leaves of absence. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thanks, everybody. Up, next meeting. I got to do that next meeting. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held Thursday, May twenty-third at seven thirty PM in the Board Conference Room of the Oakmont Administration Building.